Well, good morning. We'd like to welcome you to this study session of the Mesa City Council. Our good mayor, Scott Smith, is back in Washington along with councilmember Scott Summers, so we wish them safe travels. The first item on our agenda will be to, item number one, review the upcoming agenda for council meeting on the 27th of January. On the first page, we have items two through three C. Next is items three D. Yes, councilmember Richens.
In reviewing the report for the Circle K stores, it seemed like there was an inordinate amount of calls for service on that one. Can we get some advice and guidance on that one?
We could have our police department.
The pattern was odd as well. It had a, it kind of, the calls that were occurring from there changed. All of a sudden, they had this huge drop-off on shoplifting calls and big change. So, I'm just trying to get my head around. And it's a change from a current beer and wine license to a liquor store license, correct?
Yes, that's correct, councilmember Richens.
They're looking at taking and changing from a beer and wine to a liquor store. And it's a location transfer, so it's a license that they already own that they're just transferring or wanting to transfer to another location.
And your concern is the location, sir?
Well, no, it's the regularity and volume of calls at that location that, I mean, if we add additional service, I mean, we're going to have more problems there?
Okay, I just asked somebody to get the specificity for the calls for service exactly, but when you, you mentioned a drop-off on certain calls like shoplifting and whatnot. If you see any drop-offs on shoplifting, it's because we've changed some of our standards in response to the convenience stores with, with what we'll take for criteria for shoplifting. So that's where, if you see a drop-off, that might be one of the issues. With the regular calls for service, I'm going to have to get better research before I give you an answer.
Yeah, in the report that we got in 2013, they have, they had 13 calls for check welfare, 10 for a civil matter. These are just kind of the highlights. Nine for subjects disturbing, 20 for trespass, and that's probably means they're working with us proactively, trying to trespass people that are loitering on the property, right? So I was just trying to interpret the signals. Are these positive signs that the high offenders are working with us, or are these negative signs?
I wouldn't want to give you an uneducated answer on it, sir. What I can do is get you, I can talk to the district commander there and find out if this is a store that works with us.
Okay, can we just hold this one up maybe a couple of weeks while we gather some more information? And I just want to make sure that these, that the convenience store ordinance is working. And if we're going to reward somebody to give them additional line of business through a liquor license, that we need to make sure that that particular store is working with us and not against us in what we're trying to accomplish.
We'll have, we'll have you an answer. We can have you an answer today, of course, but if you want to hold it until the next time, that's fine.
Yeah, well, let's see how the next week evolves, whether or not it stays on the agenda.
Okay, councilmember Kavanaugh, so.
Yeah, thank you. This is a follow-up question to police policies because I asked a question of police department about two months ago that I'm still waiting for an answer on in terms of that change in policy, in terms of responses to, to calls involving various amounts of money. And that, my understanding is that, that the police department is, is not responding to a much higher degree of calls because you've raised the threshold of, of amount of money that you're going to respond to. And the concern that I had heard expressed at that time was this very concern that the convenience stores would no longer report the shoplifting of the lower amounts. And we were expecting to see a corresponding drop in, in reporting. So this is, maybe it's not appropriate for this agenda item, but I think this is an example of something, a question I raised several months ago that I still don't have an answer from, from the police department.
And councilman Kavanaugh, if you don't have an answer, that's, that's remiss on our part, but the fact of the matter is, when you inquired, we, we changed the policy and we dropped the amount back down. There were some, there are still some minimums that we would not respond to. Beer runs, for instance, without a suspect description, viable suspect description is not something we're going to necessarily take a report on. There has to be some other ancillary evidence for us to take that report. Part of that is accountability on behalf of the, the enterprise itself. For instance, some of the stores create an environment in which it makes it difficult to commit the theft. Other stores almost provide an environment to commit the theft.
Right, and I'm very well familiar with that.
Yeah, so that, that's one of the issues, but that, we, after your, your inquiry, we did drop the, the monetary amount down.
Right, I guess it would have been helpful to respond to my inquiry, to let me know you had done that.
Okay, and what we can do, sir, is if the public safety, you want us to bring it up so we can discuss it, we can do that as well.
Yeah, we'll consider that.
Yeah, just, you know, on that line here, we have from between 2008 and 2013, you had three shoplifts, six in the following year, eight in the following year, then it went to 15, then 27, then in 2013, it dropped back to two. So I just need to have some analysis. Is that because our ordinance is effective, or is that because we're not taking reports like, but the crime's not changing? So that's kind of, you know, I'm hoping Circle K responded to ordinance and redid their stores to make them safer. That's, that's what, that, the first blush of that statistic would be. But then if, if, you know, councilmember Kavanaugh, what he's saying, if we're just saying, well, if people are shoplifting candy bars and you don't have any suspect, I mean, really, what do we do? Do we really turn out a, you know, multiple hundred dollar an hour resources for a 50-cent candy bar? Well, no, maybe, maybe you don't.
That's exactly, we're just, we've really tried to find a balance, and I think with, as, as we've grown as a jurisdiction, as many jurisdictions that grow and evolve, we have to pick and choose how we're going to use our resources most effectively. And as councilman Kavanaugh said, we saw the flaw in, in having such a high threshold on some of those things. And when he brought that up, we had to revisit that. But I don't want to give you an uneducated answer on, on why you see that plummet for the next year as to whether that's a SEPTED issue, or a convenience store ordinance issue, or it's just the fact that we're not taking those reports anymore that, that don't meet a certain standard. So I want to give you an educated answer, and I'll provide that for you. Councilmember Luna.
I'm just curious to know if we can get some updates on those policy changes and, and the metrics you used in terms of why you changed those, that standard.
Well, I will tell you this, I cannot, and, and I can speak to this frankly, it's not completely scientific. Some of it is data-driven, but it's not, I would not tell you that it is all data-driven. I would tell you that some of it is somewhat empirical or anecdotal to some extent. Okay. Sounds like we have council direction. Everyone agrees, we'll go ahead and take this off the agenda for now and get some more information. Look forward to hearing back from PD. Thank you, sir. Next item is three E and four A. Next would be four B through four D. Four E through four G. Four H through four J. Four K through, looks like five B, and then five C. And then, looks like six A through six D. Possibly some questions on six C? Yeah. Councilmember Richens.
I just, Gordon, I just have a couple of clarifying questions, or maybe just one, on some of the, the, in the council report, under the background section, you start listing the, all of the different changes. And so under land use, there's land use revisions, and there's four items in the design standards revisions. The one I wasn't really clear on was item five, the canal bank setbacks. And also there's, in, in that paragraph, it talks about present zoning ordinance allows lots that back up to public alleys wider than 16 feet to measure the rear yard alley from the centerline of the alley. So it says wider than 16 feet. Most alleys in Mesa are 16 feet alleys. So like, and I'm using my own house as, as an example, my alley's 16 feet wide. So does it have to be 16 feet, one inch?
No.
Or is it the intent 16-foot alley?
It starts at 16 feet and can include 20-foot alleys also.
Okay, we might want to make that clear because there's an interpretation that could be made that if you're 16 feet, you're not there, you have to be wider than 16 feet in the current ordinance. That might be an additional cleanup that you have to do, you know? Because later, later on, when you talk about the canal bank, it says at least 16 feet wide.
The, the actual language of the ordinance itself says, rear yard adjacent to alley or canal, rear yard setback adjacent to 16-foot or wider. So it starts at 16 feet.
Okay, okay, good. And then if, if somebody does back up to an alley, why do we need a 10-foot setback off an, off, I mean, to a canal bank where you have no neighbor for some distance on the other side of that canal? Why do we need 10 feet at all?
We're trying to preserve open space in the rear yard.
Shouldn't that be the property owner's choice? I mean, why do we want to preserve that?
The, the, the theory in most single-family building setbacks, the theory behind that is there's a certain amount of light and air and spacing that occurs with the, the single-family home. Every zoning district has what those spacing requirements are. The setback requirement, it's the light and air requirement also, but it also has to do with recreation and space for a pool in the future and...
Well, wouldn't you want that between the two buildings instead of behind an accessory dwelling, accessory unit? I mean, because it seems to me that, that, that having that 10-foot setback off the rear yard breaks up the, breaks up that space. And so you don't get as much usable space, because now I have 10 feet behind my shed, and then I have this distance between the house and the shed. If I could push that shed all the way back, then I have more room. So that's what I'm trying to understand.
The setback applies to the primary residence. There's an exception to the setback that's already present for detached buildings like sheds and pool houses and studios and, and garages and things like that.
So, so is this specifically then referring to the primary structure?
Yes.
I think that's the other piece of clarity that we need in there.
The, because we're doing, because we're doing a housekeeping ordinance, we're, we're kind of going through and we're, we're picking up and clarifying, or not clarifying, we're amending sections that have already been adopted. There's other sections of the ordinance that make it clear that the building setbacks only apply to the primary residence.
Okay, okay. Because it was, just from reading through the report, it was hard for me to kind of unwind. What, what pieces are you talking about here?
I probably didn't probably communicate well that as well as I should.
Okay, all right, thanks. That's, that's what I needed.
Okay, good, it's good to get the clarity. Okay, that was item six C. Six D. Six E through seven D. And seven E through seven J. Okay. No other questions on that? We'll go to item two, which is a presentation. We're going to hear a presentation and discuss the Cities of Service Grant and Neighborhood Outreach programs. Feel free to introduce yourselves and...
Good morning, vice mayor and members of council. I'm Michelle Abbas. I'm the volunteer manager in the Neighborhood Outreach Office. And thank you for the opportunity to be here with you today to provide an overview of the Cities of Servi- Cities of Service Impact Volunteering Fund. In addition, we will be providing updates on efforts through the Diversity and Neighborhood Outreach Office, including the Building Strong Neighborhoods Initiative and volunteer programs and activities. With me today is Susan Ferbota, Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator for Districts Two and Six. Susan, myself, and the Neighborhood Outreach Team are supported by many other city staff and agency partners, all working together to build a better Mesa. Founded in New York City in 2009, Cities of Service is a bipartisan coalition of mayors who work together to lead an effort to expand community service and volunteerism in cities across the nation. As a result of our culture of service in Mesa, we became the Cities of Service in 2009. This means that we use volunteer strategies that target community needs, measure our outcomes to build program success, and use best practices. Recently, in 2013, we received the honor of being named a Leadership City with Cities of Service. As a leadership city, we are one of 23 cities across the nation who are dedicated to the Cities of Service values, but we have also named a representative as being committed to lead the city in service as a viable tool to meet local challenges. As a Mesa native and a product of Mesa service programs, I'm honored to serve in this role for Mesa. As a result of our involvement in Cities of Service and the successes we have seen in our volunteer programs and opportunities in Neighborhood Outreach, Mesa was recently selected as one of 23 cities awarded $25,000 in the Cities of Service Impact Volunteering Grant Fund to implement the, the service initiative Love Your Block. At the conclusion of this grant, if all metrics are met, Mesa will also be eligible for an additional $5,000 bonus grant for a total of $30,000 in grant funding. The goal of Love Your Block is to enhance existing Neighborhood Outreach programs to increase neighborhood revitalization, volunteerism, and community pride. We know that we already have a strong tradition of this in our community, so we will, we will be working with community partners and city departments to provide the infrastructure and resources needed to take volunteer engagement to the next level. Through this grant, we will receive funding for Love Your Block, which will support the programs that increase graffiti reporting, resident assistance through programs like Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and community projects like painting and debris removal. Through the Cities of Service funding, we intend to increase resident engagement that will impact local challenges and contribute to the long-term success of our city and meaningfully utilize volunteers to address needs within neighborhoods while promoting partnerships and promoting collaboration. Building off the strong programs we already have in place, Neighborhoods for Love Your Block will be selected through the Building Strong Neighborhoods Initiative and Neighbors Helping Neighbors requests, with the goal of serving a variety of neighborhoods in all six council districts. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Susan to provide an update on the Building Strong Neighborhoods Initiative.
Good morning. The Building Strong Neighborhoods Initiative is based on a model that city manager Chris Brady brought with him when he joined the city of Mesa. The program was first offered in Mesa to Mesa residents in January 2007. We're now in our eighth season, and to date, we have served over 60 neighborhoods engaging over 15,000 homes. Throughout the initiative, we work with many partners, including city of Mesa staff, nonprofit agencies, area businesses, and education centers. Some examples of past partnerships with our nonprofit agencies, including working with Mesa United Way to bring the VITA Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program into the neighborhoods, hosting workshops, including working with our animal control unit, as well as AZ Cats and Maricopa County Animal Control. We've brought drug awareness training to adults through working with community bridges, and we've recently added a leadership component, working with West Mesa Community Develop Corporation and the Leadership Center. Every Building Strong Neighborhoods has a team component built in where we work one-on-one with residents and city staff. Many of our neighborhoods see teams, such as a private, a public safety team, where the crime prevention officer in that district will work directly with residents on public safety issues and concerns that they may have to increase or create neighborhood watch groups in the neighborhood. We also work with the traffic analyst in the neighborhood to have a, to have a traffic team where residents can work one-on-one to address any traffic problems and speed concerns. Of course, our neighborhood team is kind of like our catch-all team, where we work with residents on neighborhood-related issues and projects that they would like to see happen in their neighborhood. In the past, we've had a code team where the code officer in that area will work directly with residents to increase awareness of city codes and enforcement. Of course, one of our goals is to build a more cohesive neighborhood once the initiative is complete, so when residents continue to meet through neighborhood watch groups or annual potluck, such as the ones in the slide, so when the initiative is over, that the effort continues. Many of the Building Strong Neighborhoods that have been selected are neighborhoods that we never had a lot of communication with before, and so we continue to build off of those efforts. Working with our solid waste department, our clean sweep, green sweep, and tire bins are a, a huge success and one of the things that the neighbors really like to see in the neighborhood. And again, because these are neighborhoods that might not have been engaged before, they're often neighborhoods that have never had clean sweep dumpsters in the neighborhood before. And as a result, up until December of 2013, we've removed 2,399 tons of debris through the Building Strong Neighborhoods clean sweep dumpsters, as well as working with the code officers, increased the code cases to 1,298. Generally, we'll work with the code officer to go through and do a sweep of the entire neighborhood, so that people receive a courtesy letter that they're out of compliance, but then get a list of the dumpster dates and locations. So you're out of compliance, but here's a dumpster to alleviate that. And we found that because of that, that the courtesy letter notification is very effective. With that, I'm going to turn this back over to Michelle, where she'll go over in detail more on the Neighborhood Outreach volunteer activities and programs, including the Building Strong Neighborhood volunteer projects.
So the main volunteer programs that Neighborhood Outreach is currently facilitating include Neighbors Helping Neighbors, our tool lending program, in addition to the sign sweep. In addition to these programs, we're also coordinating a lot of numerous service activities, which include our National Days of Service, all the activity, volunteer activities in relation to the BSNs, a lot of Eagle Scout projects, wall painting projects, curb numbers, a really a large variety of projects that help it improve and beautify our neighborhoods. So for the last fiscal year, volunteer contributions were impactful to the residents in Mesa, not only in the time served, but also in the donations provided by volunteers. So you'll see during the last fiscal year, we received over $15,000 in, in-kind donations that went towards service that was happening through our programs. This is just another demonstration of the generosity of Mesa residents and businesses and to the presence of volunteerism in our community. The combined averages, or the combined impact also included an average of about 200 volunteers per BSN neighborhood. So our examples of our most common BSN projects include neighborhood and alley cleanups, house paintings, painting curb numbers to improve emergency response times, also wall painting projects, and the creation of neighborhood signs, like the picture you see in the middle, which was from the most recent District Three BSN. We are also proud of our community for their involvement and support, significant support of events and service days. So service days like 9/11, Day of Remembrance, and Make a Difference Day were supported with over $11,000 in in-kind donations from our community during the 2012/13 year. You've all received updates on the most recent Make a Difference Day, but just a quick overview of that. For this past year's Make a Difference Day, which happened in October, we saw an increase in the number of volunteer hours, square footage of graffiti reported, and the number of residents served, which over 11,000 residents were served on that one day of service. Events and impact like this don't happen on accident. We really believe that they happen because it's valued on an organizational level with the city, with our vice mayor, mayor, council, city manager, and staff, but also because our residents value it, and they really place value on volunteering their time to build a better community they want to live in and be a part of. In cleaning totals from this event, for the current fiscal year, we already have coordinated over 5,000 volunteers, contributing nearly 22,000 hours, and we are on a path to surpass our stats from the prior fiscal year for community involvement. The volunteers of Mesa definitely know the meaning of sweat equity and serve as an example nationwide in what can happen when service is used as a tool to meet local challenges. We are proud to be selected by Cities of Service to receive up to $30,000 to enhance these opportunities in Mesa. You'll be voting for approval of this funding during the January 27th council meeting. At this time, we welcome any comments or suggestions you may have, and I look forward to working with the mayor, vice mayor, and council on the Love Your Block service initiative. On behalf of the entire Diversity and Neighborhood Outreach Office, we also want to thank you and let you know that we appreciate your continued support of the Building Strong Neighborhoods Initiative and the various volunteer activities we're coordinating.
Wonderful. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Congratulations on the grant. And also, again, I want to commend you for helping coordinate the Day of Service for the MLK holiday. District Three, they had some wonderful partnership with Hands-on of Greater Phoenix and some of our Maricopa volunteers to, to prep and paint and clean up Air Force Veterans House in, in District Three. I do have a question. What is the date for Make a Difference Day this year in 2014? Because I know we'd like to give as much notice as possible to accommodate requests, because sometimes people wait till the last minute, and I know it's a great challenge for you trying to place people. So have they, have that, has that weekend been identified yet?
So annually, it'll be held on the fourth Saturday of every October, so I'm not sure what the specific date is. I want to say maybe that's, that falls on the 25th this year, but we will make sure that we get calendar invites sent out to you, so you have that date on your calendar as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Yes, Mr. Luna.
First of all, Michelle, Susan, thank you. Great job. It was a great presentation. I also participated, I think, as Make a Difference Day, wherever Charlotte sent me to. Anyway, it was a great activity. But somebody asked me yesterday in terms of getting a dumpster in their neighborhood, is it, is a neighborhood, does a neighborhood have to register through you, and then the dumpster goes to that area? I wasn't sure what to tell them.
Yeah, if you want to have the resident contact us, we can certainly walk them through the process. We are awarded through the solid waste division so many dumpsters for our Building Strong Neighborhoods, but the clean sweep is a program run through the solid waste department that any resident with black barrel service is eligible to get, so we can walk them through that process to see how they can get that in their neighborhood.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, as long as they have black barrel service, they're eligible for clean sweep once a year.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, great presentation. We appreciate all that Neighborhood Services does. Yeah, absolutely. We as council members have really learned to love and appreciate Neighborhood Services as the challenges come in. I just thought of one, we had elderly woman that had been a little bit on the hoarder side, and it really impacted a neighborhood, and we saw folks step up to get those dumpsters and get things coordinated, and just a wonderful effort. Very positive, not on the enforcement side, it was about community coming together, and thanks to all you do to make that happen, and just hundreds of examples throughout the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Our next item is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. We'd like to hear reports on meetings or conferences attended since we've last met. Yes, Mr. Galover.
Yeah, this past weekend, we had the MLK parade and MLK activities. We had a wonderful turnout, especially on Monday for the parade. We're excited that third place is now Martin Luther King Jr. Way. I want to thank Lenny from Transportation for all their help, and the MLK committee for their support in making that become a reality. So thank you for everybody who helped make the parade and the committee, and the dinner as well, making sure that everything went out without a hitch. So thank you to everybody in the community.
Wonderful. Other reports? No? Okay, scheduling of meetings. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, vice mayor, members of council. So, big weekend. This Saturday, January 25th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., we'll have double play at the park. So this is our open house, if you would, for the Cub Stadium and Riverview Park. So we invite everyone to come out and have an opportunity to get to experience the stadium and, as well as the Riverview Park. It's a free event. We will have free fishing at the lake, our newly renovated, expanded lake. There'll be trolley tours and walking tours throughout the training complex, all the way over to the park. Live music, there's a baseball card show, and then at 5:45, we'll have the dedication, and that'll be followed by fireworks. So we're looking forward to it. So welcome everybody to come out.
Where's that dedication stand on yours?
It'll be, main stage, I believe, is kind of the center...
Paseo? Yeah, yeah, just west of the lake.
Yeah, it'll be west of the lake. So you'll, will be pretty obvious, I think, what you get out there. Anyway, we're looking forward to it.
Wonderful, great time, yes. Okay, entertain a motion to convene an executive session. We have a motion, Mr. Luna. Second, Mr. Kavanaugh. Okay, we're going that way.
Great.